About April 4th. On the April 4th. Can I try here? Words of Mississippi again? My only good thing, I can't make a target at home, so I gotta get in here.
Very well.
Thank you guys for joining us for tonight's meeting. The, uh, I'd like to ask Commissioner Longhorn to do the, the invitation and pledge.
If you would like to join me, please bow your head. Father, we do come to you with thankful hearts, thankful for this time of the year. When things are coming back alive again, we thank you for that. We thank you for the many blessings that you've given us as citizens of Stanley County. And just pray that as we make decisions tonight, that we would make decisions that are pleasing in your sight. Just continue to guide and direct us, forgive us when we fail you, because we're all sinners. These things are praying, in Christ's name, amen. You join me with the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Longhorn. With the board's permission, um, we took some notes in work meeting, I'd like to make two adjustments to the agenda. I would like to add, I'd like to seek a motion to add a, uh, award presentation as item number one. And then I would like to consolidate existing items six, seven, uh, five, six, seven, eight, into what would be a new item six. So Dwayne Wingo just has to do one presentation, because it's the same information from four different avenues.
So moved.
We have a move, a motion by Vice Chairman Almond.
Second.
Second by Commissioner E. For any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, fellow commissioners for that. That'll make that go a little smoother tonight. So, for item number one, I'm gonna, that makes public comments number two, so just stand by a minute for that. I have the distinct honor this evening to be asked to present an award to a man that has served Stanley County for 30 years. Mr. Brian Simpson. Are you hiding from me back there? There you are, okay, yeah. Brian began, were working for Stanley County as an EMF shift supervisor in 1993, and he managed to make it to EMS manager in August of '06. Shortly after that, he was promoted to the emergency services director in October of '07, and he served that role for 14 plus years. I met Brian really when the pandemic started. I had met Mr. Simpson prior to that, but I really got to work with him a little bit and see his leadership and his leadership style, and to see the massive amount of things that his job is responsible for, and how well and delicately and diplomatically he, he achieved that job while keeping to respect of his, his men from all the departments that worked for him. He's, he's just, he's got a great talent for it, he has a great passion for it, and Stanley County was incredibly blessed to have you, sir. You've been a champion and a passionate advocate for both safety and emergency management. Your service has been exemplary. Andy wrote that your level-headed, common sense approach to emergen-, well, which is not anything I'm known for, by the way. Um, your level-headed, common sense approach to emergency management, as well as outstanding people skills proved invaluable in your ability to manage all our county's emergency events over the past 14 plus years, and I think that's an understatement, but I don't have any better words for it myself. So, uh, we are pleased, and I am specifically honored to be the one to, uh, uh, be allowed to do this, but we are very pleased to be able to offer Brian the state's highest public service award, the Order of the Longleaf Pine. Brian, if you would, would you please come down here and let's take a picture with you and shake your hand? Appreciate it from you, sir. I've learned a lot from you in the town I got to work with you. Can we get someone to get a good picture? I'm sure you're somewhere. Is there a photographer somewhere? Come on, Dale. Even if you have an iPhone, you're fine.
Oh, no, I'm an Android guy.
Good man. Can I get a picture presentation of you? That'll be the highest honor I've had since I've been as an officer. Just, just get in here, come on. I took your shot. Can you get us? How many of them are done?
Nobody's.
Just walk away.
I don't know who to look at.
I'm gonna go with Andy. Thank you again, Brian. Thank you guys. Brian, you can blame Dale for that. Thank you guys for allowing me to do, do that. That's one of the things I'm most grateful for, for having this job yet. I worked with Brian in my role as commissioner throughout the beginning of COVID, having no idea what in the world we were gonna do or how we were gonna do it. And every single time I set foot in that EOC, in that wet dank basement down there, he's there, he's smiling, his people are there, he's got the respect, he, he gets the job done. It's just, and he just continued to do it month in, month out. It just seemed to go on forever, but he managed to get it done. So, I, uh, I have a huge respect for what that job entails, after watching him do it, and he just never seemed to get tired of it. He just kept doing it, even when I know he was exhausted, he just kept doing it. So, thank you again, Brian, for your service. All right, um, that brings us to public comments for the evening. We have two signed up. Sheriff Crisco. Think you're in the building, where you at? There you are.
Hiding behind the post.
Come on up, sir.
Good evening. I'll be brief, something that I've put off, and I, and I blame myself, but I had a conversation last week with Commissioner Longhorn. He took time, come by the office, and we were talking about a multitude of things, but while he was there, he inquired about taking a, taking a tour of the jail, just to see what all the talk is about, far as the overcrowding, the shortages that we have. We've, you know, I've explained it to y'all multiple times, and Commissioner Longhorn come down and we took a tour. When we were finished, I asked him, I said, did I, did I blew this out of proportion? No, not in any way, shape, or form. Basically, what I'm here to do tonight is to ask and encourage each of you as board members, one, come take a tour of the detention center. Right now, that is a big topic, I know that. But also, not just that, I encourage each of you to call me and schedule a time to either go ride with our animal protective services guys, or just patrol guys. Come see what they do day in and day out now. Cause from when I started years ago to the way it is now, it is completely different. Times have changed. And I truly think, for y'all as commissioners, y'all would see a whole different picture by taking the time and walking their shoes one day. That's all I've got. Thank y'all.
Before Jeff takes, gets too far, do you commissioners have any questions for him?
Well, I did have one. I'd like to ask, how about just setting us up a time for we, for us to do that?
Well, I tell you what, if no one here has my phone number, I'll be more than happy to give it to you.
Oh, yeah, 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 right. We could, I mean, yeah. We could, um.
I'll go again.
Would it be convenient for you to do it in groups or one-on-one, sir?
Whatever's convenient for y'all's schedule.
So how about we just?
Y'all call me.
A few of us will call you and figure it out.
Call me, we'll set some dates and some times, whatever's convenient for y'all. Be more than happy to.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Uh huh.
Do you want to make one quick positive comment?
Yes.
And you mentioned animal control. We talked last night, and happy birthday to you, didn't know it was your birthday. There's, it's, it's two doors down from you last night, that was pretty sad. And there were like nine or 10 animals in the house, and the lady had passed away, and your guys, three of them came rolling through at about what, 8:30, 9 o'clock last night?
Yes, sir.
And, um, so I appreciate y'all working with Admiral PD and stuff, and there was another situation in the afternoon where Admiral PD and the, and the sheriff's department helped take care of a situation downtown, so thank y'all for all you do.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff Crisco. Mr. Rodney Turner, you were next on the, uh, the public comments list tonight?
I want to apologize to the panel for a couple of weeks ago, I was here and spoke over my three minutes, but, uh, I'm just not used to, uh, being disregarded. My, my children been disregarded and, and, uh, by a county worker, who's still working with the county, and, and I haven't been so fortunate to be able to meet with anyone. I see, uh, Mr. Crisco, um, it seems like it's pretty easy for him to meet with someone to discuss what's going on with the detention center, but I'm trying to keep my children out of a detention center. And, um, I came to this county, DSS, for help for my children being abused, and one of the workers, Mandy Llewellyn, lied, took the stand and perjured herself, and it can be proven. And I met with Mr. Jenkins, and now I can't get an email back. Two weeks ago, they told me, uh, somebody would ask me if, if somebody could speak with me, I haven't heard from anyone. I've called, I've made emails, I've discussed it with everyone that I could possibly discuss it with, I can't get a meeting with anyone. March 10th, I was notified, it's been another claim of child abuse by my children, and it could have been stopped by Mandy Llewellyn. And, and I'm, nobody, nobody is helping me, no one. Nobody will speak to me. And, and, and it's, it's, it's sad, it's disheartening too, to know that my children have been disregarded.
May I have a moment to address it with you in the limited capacity I can?
Yes.
And please understand, I'm, I'm not dodging a question because I don't want to answer it, I'm dodging the question because of the advice of counsel. What we've been told is that there's two particular topics. One is you have a complaint about, uh, a personnel issue. And you, you were given the phone number to call to, to handle that one. And that is legally all we're allowed to do. I'm, if me or anyone on this board were to have a conversation about that with you in detail, we are literally breaking the law. We, am I correct in that, County Manager Lucas?
That's correct, it's a personnel matter, so you cannot speak to him directly about a person, one of our personnel.
So who do I?
I mean, I'm being, like, I'm being generically vague now, intentionally, so I'm trying not to run afoul of that law. Please don't think I'm being vague to be, to be rude, I'm, I'm trying to use my words carefully, so I don't do something that doesn't help you, or hurt us, or anything else. So, there is nothing in that regard with the personnel issue that we have any power over. We literally cannot talk about it, or, or say anything else except that we can't talk about it.
Okay, do you mind if I just, cause I want to get some understanding, I don't want to overspeak.
No, go ahead, sir.
So, who do I, cause I've made, I've, I've filed it, I've done that with the state.
Okay.
Nobody is speaking to me, so nobody can speak with me in the county.
Not at the.
That's what, that's what.
County Manager Lucas, is there a person, is there someone in county staff who does have the authority to speak to him in this matter, like HR or somebody or not?
Not a person.
No, so it has to go through the number that he's been given?
Yes.
So, sir, that is, unfortunately, not trying to be rude, but that is all we're allowed to do.
So who do I?
I don't like it, it's just the, the truth of it.
Um, cause I'm confused, I just want to know, so, so this worker can break the law, and it's no one I can go to, I filed with Raleigh, and it's, it's no one I can go to?
With Raleigh, that, that is the channel, yes, sir.
Okay.
They've truly broken the law.
Oh, they truly broke the law.
You could go that route, correct, you could take it up to the sheriff's department, but we from the admin side, from the county staff side, legally cannot get involved. And I'm not, I wanted to address you tonight, because I don't want you to keep coming back thinking that we're just being quiet and not paying you attention, because that's what we probably should legally do.
I understand, but nobody would have told me anything, like, I'm new to this.
Right.
Like, so no one is, I mean.
I could talk to you privately, but I, I honestly, I could only tell you what I just told you.
Yeah, that's fine. See, I, I wouldn't even have been, like, cause I'm, I'm, this is new to me, and, and, you know, DSS and child protective custody, they are services, they are, uh.
They're a complicated thing to work with. I grew up in that system myself, I know what you mean.
So, so, um, when I come to speak to someone, no one will talk to me, so.
My advice would be find out whoever that phone number was, I would call that department once a day, every day.
Okay.
Until you're the guy, until they just would prefer to call you back than have to deal with you every day, that's what I would do. I swear to God, that's my, my only advice, sir.
And your name, you are?
My name?
Uh huh.
Tommy Jordan, I'm the board chair.
Okay.
That and $3.50 will buy you a cup of coffee, but.
I understand, it's just no one, I, I didn't know any of this, so I'm just trying to bring it to the attention.
I didn't think you were trying to be hostile, I just think, I've, I've seen people in your situation, sir, and you seem like you're trying to do the good thing, but don't, don't know where to go, and I, I wish I could tell you more, but we literally are not allowed to by law.
Okay, okay. Well, I'm gonna do some more.
Does he need legal counsel to contact people?
No, he, he's got a.
He can get his own legal counsel.
Issue that goes above us, that just.
I, I had an issue with one of the DSS, uh, DSS workers, and.
Just like you may be legal counsel to help you somehow, but you already.
Oh, yeah, his only counsel, yeah.
Yeah, I do have legal counsel, but the thing is, I do have legal counsel, but no, no one, since the beginning of this, no one is really, no, like, this lady is, is, is damaging families, and she's still working for the county, and when I go to speak to someone, nobody will speak to me. They'll say, well, make this report here, report here. I report it to everyone, and then when I go to Raleigh, they tell me, they send me back here. Like, when I speak to Raleigh, they tell me to come back here, speak to the director. I spoke to the director, the director of DSS didn't want to speak to me, I spoke to her, uh, immediate supervisor, and once I spoke to him, he said he would get back with me, he failed to get back with me, I emailed him, he failed to return my email, I came two weeks ago, I spoke to the panel, and they was like, they would get, you know, set up a beating with.
Rodney, let me cut you off a second, sir, because I'm trying to wrap this up, but the, the, the fact that I sit on this side of this bench now, has, I have, I have learned some things that I didn't know when I stood on that side of the bench.
Uh huh.
And one of those things is, I cannot swear it applies to you, but I think it probably does. I've asked questions and nobody's answered them, because they legally can't.
Oh, I'm sorry. But see, tell me that, instead of coming to me. Like, before now.
I've been in situations from this side of the job where you can't, the only thing that you can do is not answer the phone.
Okay.
It's not, it's not fair, it's not nice, it's the way the job has to be done to protect both you and the process you're trying to do.
Okay, well, before now, I had no idea of this, it was just, just, I'm just being disregarded.
Well, I, I promise you, sir, that's, that's not the case, I just, and if there's a way I, I can help you out outside of this meeting, I'll be glad to.
Okay.
You can call the county, they will give you my number, you've got my permission to give them my number.
Okay.
I just, I can't tell you much more than I told you right here, but, but I'll be available if you want to.
Okay, that's fine, I'll, I'll make contact with you.
I appreciate your time, sir, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Else signed up for public comments? If there's anybody else here that wanted to speak tonight, didn't get a chance to sign up? Stand up, come forward, raise your hand. Okay. That's it for that agenda item. Going on to new agenda item number three, the fiscal year 21-22 audit. Presenters Toby Henson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. General, North Carolina general statute says, states that each unit of local government and public authority shall have its accounts audited as soon as possible after the close of each fiscal year by, uh, a certified public accountant that is certified by the commission as qualified to audit local government accounts. The auditor shall be selected by and shall report directly to you all, the governing board. So, this time of year, where we're at is for you all to, uh, select or approve the auditing firm. And before you this evening is, uh, the calls from Thompson, Price, Scott, Adams and Company to, uh, perform the fiscal year 21-22 audit. And this would be their sixth year, uh, performing the audit. They've done the five previous years, and just to give you a background, just a quick background of this firm, uh, they've got three offices, they're located in Whiteville, which is the office that we deal with, then they've got an office in Wilmington and, uh, in, in, in Elizabethtown, but, but we, we deal with the, uh, the staff in Whiteville. They audit 22 counties total, and the Whiteville office, uh, does 14 of those counties, and that's, that's the 2021 audits, uh, that were done. I'm not sure how many they're gonna have for this, this current year. Their price, again, for this year will be $56,950, which is a, uh, increase of 4.5% over last year, and this is basically primarily due to, uh, a new implementation from, uh, Governmental Accounting Standards Board Number 87 to, uh, with the lease accounting reporting that we've got to deal with. Uh, this is adding more work to us, is adding more work to the auditors, it's, it's one of those things that, um, you wonder why in the world we're having to do all this, cause it really, I don't see where it benefits anyone hardly, but, but we've got to do it, so this is, uh, uh, their price for this year. I've contemplated seeking other quotes, but being with this new implementation, I thought it may be best just to stay with this firm, at least for this current year, to, uh, you know, just maybe make it more easier with, with having to deal with this implementation. And I was considering next year, seeking, uh, seeking out our options, if there's no other, you know, additional changes and implementations that we're gonna have to, have to do. So, uh, uh, I'll be glad to answer any questions. This would be their second price increase since we started using them in fiscal year 16-17. They had an increase last year of just $500, and, um, which is, I guess, around 1%. And this year, it is going, uh, increasing 4.5%, uh, up to $56,950, and that does include the Medicaid portion of the audit. That part used to not be included, because we didn't have to go through that every year, but now, we're all having to go through the Medicaid part every year, so it's included in the, uh, total cost of, of the audit. So, I'll be glad to answer any questions, if you have any.
Thank you, Toby. Any questions from commissioners? I'll make a motion, will you approve?
I have eight questions.
Can we have that motion for a moment?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, Commissioner Ebert.
Okay. I'll yield the floor. Commissioner Longhorn, you have the floor.
I thought you were getting ready to ask a question.
I was too, yeah, he tried to slide that.
Sorry, sorry for interrupting.
You think you are, Ashley, I mean, Ashley Morgan?
The question I have, Toby, is local CPA firms, I'm sure it takes a special firm to do government-type audits. Do we have a CPA firm in Stanley County that could do an audit of this nature?
Not that I know of to do county audits. There may be some that's closer by to do maybe smaller towns, but I don't know of anyone to do county audits. And I've, and I looked, uh, went in earlier today and looked at the, uh, the different units, local government units, and who does their audits, and I didn't see anybody from around the county. There is one that, uh, uh, that I think's got an office in Charlotte, I think this, it's Elliot Davis, uh, I think they work out of Charlotte, and Raleigh, and Cherry Beckett, um, I think they, they work out of Charlotte and Raleigh. There's really not, if you're a town, you've got quite a few choices out there. If you're a county, less and less firms are doing county audits.
Do we have like a, a list that's provided to you of audit firms that do these type audits, or?
There's a list on the State Treasurer's website, uh, that's got, uh, each town and county and school system, public authority, and it's got who, uh, who does their audits. There may be another list out there that lists just, just audit firms, but the one, what I've been able to find here recently is just a list of the, uh, counties and towns and public authorities that, that has what, uh, what their, who their auditor is, who did their audits for, say, the last maybe four or five years.
One of the primary differences between municipal government typically and local government is, or county governments, is the fact that you have to have a single audit for all the federal money. Now, a lot of these small towns are now gonna have to have single audits now because of the American Rescue Plan, and it's gonna jack their, it's gonna, their prices for their audits are gonna go up now that they can use their American Rescue Plan money to help pay for that. But we've always, we always have a single audit because of all the federal Medicaid dollars and federal, uh, money that comes into DSS, so that's always part of our audit, makes it way more complex, and the LGC maintains a, a list of those, um, audit firms that are doing county work. And so, there, there are no, there are no local firms that do county, county audits, I mean, they're, they're very complex, because you have the, you have the single audit requirement.
So, LGC provides?
Yes, well, the State Treasurer's Office, that's correct.
Thank you.
Any further questions from commissioners? The floor is yours, Commissioner Ebert. Oh, you bother me, pal.
I make a motion that we approve the Thomas Price Scott Adams and Company to perform the fiscal year 2021-22 audit.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Shu-Ded, we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner E. For any further discussion?
We did get a local, um, audit deal for someone in the county, for the city of Locust. We've been going outside the county, but we did get a local one, cause like Andy said, it's pretty complex, that, you know, between the counties and municipalities, so.
And that's great, because Stanley County tax dollars need to stay in Stanley County whenever possible. If the quotes are as goo-, I mean, you got to compete. If the quotes are as good, I mean, you got to compete. If we got somebody in the county, it's always best to spend the tax dollars here.
I agree, but look, and I think that maybe over the next year, we could look and see what's, if someone can do it. I like what you said about sticking with them because of the changes.
And you, and you can see on the State Treasurer's website, you can, it's got the prices out that, it's got the prices stated that the auditing firms have charged the, the local governments to do their audits. And as far as the, again, the number that Thompson, Price, Scott and Adams do, I'd say they may do the second most as far as counties in the state. Martin Starnes, who we used to use, they do by far the most counties. I mean, if you look at that list, you'll see their name by a lot of counties and also towns and public authorities. They're, they're huge. We used to be with, that's who we used to use until they socked the large price increase to us. So we had to definitely seek our options at that time.
Thank you, Director. Any further discussion? You have a motion, a second? All in favor, aye? Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Toby. Senior Services Department head presentation, Ms. Pamela Sullivan.
Good evening, Chairman Jordan and fellow commissioners. How are you?
Pull your mic down a little bit so we can hear you better. Here we go.
Ooh, do I have to log into this?
You fall asleep?
Mm-hmm.
There was the, there we go.
Thank you. Thank you guys for allowing me the opportunity to provide a quick presentation about the Senior Services Department. We are a North Carolina Certified Senior Center of Excellence and we are up for our recertification this summer. It is a five-year certification. The mission of the Senior Services Department is to enhance the quality of lives for older adults in Stanley County through programming, services, supports and opportunities for those who are 60 years of age and older. We have two different locations. Our Stanley County Senior Center is located here in Albemarle on Third Street. And the West Stanley Senior Center is located in Town Center at 213 Town Center Drive. Services that we offer from the Senior Services Department, we have an Are You OK program. It is a phone reassurance program. They get a daily phone call, so they have a daily contact. Our Family Caregiver Support Program is a program for caregivers that provides information along with trainings such as powerful tools. We have Alzheimer's and dementia education. We have a caregiver connection support group. We also offer short-term respite care for caregivers and we provide incontinent supplies for caregivers through this program. Our in-home services program is for eligible seniors to receive in-home aid visits once or twice per week to assist with home management tasks such as basic housekeeping, grocery shopping, personal care or respite care as well. We have information and assistance counseling provided by our social worker at the senior center. We provide information on senior housing, home repair, modifications, home health services, hospice care, Medicare supplements, Medicare A, B, C and D, social security benefits, energy assistance, adult daycare, mental health, long-term care facilities and so forth. We also are able to provide durable medical equipment and assistive advices if folks need those. We also have legal aid. The legal aid of North Carolina comes on a quarterly basis to provide legal services and free legal advice for seniors. Our nutrition services, we house four congregate lunch sites around the county, one here in Albemarle, one in Norwood, Locusts and Oakboro. And that is part of our home delivery meal program as well. And we serve over 400 seniors a month. We also have the SHIP program, which is Senior Health Information and Insurance Program. We are able to provide unbiased Medicare counseling at the senior center. We also go out to local churches or the West Stanley Senior Center to provide those. Tax aid is a service that we have at the senior center as well. We have volunteers through the AARP program that provide income tax preparation at no cost. And then we offer transportation for seniors and we are able to do that through our HCCBG grant along with a DOT grant. And that is through SCUSA. We also provide preventative services, so these will be our activities that are actually at the center. We have different arts and crafts that go on at both locations, wood carving, basket weaving, monthly crafts, painting, knitting, anything that you can think that falls under the arts and crafts department. We have coordinated games, so most everybody knows we play bingo at the senior center. But we also play canasta and bongo and dominoes and Scrabble. We also offer educational and social classes as well, from monthly luncheons to dances. We have stomptish, which is a German group, ladies lunch bunch, a veterans' club, book club, day trips and overnight trips, and also just various health promotion classes. We are able to provide health and fitness programs as well. So different, our various exercise classes, yoga, line dancing, Tai Chi, Drums Alive, Zumba, and fall prevention classes, diabetes classes, chronic pain classes. And then we also offer senior games for those who are 50 and older. We also have volunteer opportunities and all volunteers of all ages, ages are welcome and needed at both senior centers to help provide the services and programs to help enrich the lives of seniors in this community. Is there any questions for me? I told you it was going to be short and sweet.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions, commissioners?
I was going to say thank you for coming out and I thought some of these things I totally forgot about, like the Are You OK program, which is pretty, pretty important. The situation I talked about earlier with the sheriff, it was an elderly neighbor who passed away and we have no idea for the neighbors to have how long she had passed away because nobody was, you know, it was just one of those situations there.
She didn't have a support group.
But thank you for all y'all do down there.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Pam. Next on our agenda is the Carter Bid for Nutrition Program. That's also you, Ms. Pam.
That is, thank you.
Welcome back.
Thank you. So bids were recently opened for our nutrition caterer for the program that offers congregate and home delivery meals. To solicit bids, we ran an ad in the Stanley News &amp; Press and nine food service vendors received letters of invitation. Four vendors requested bid packets and of the four packets that were sent, only two were received. The bids that were received are Golden Corral out of Ashboro at $4.85 a meal. That was for both a one or two-year contract. And then the second one was Tiffany's Catering and Events here in Albemarle and her cost was $9.68 for a one-year contract. Consideration for both were based on experience and volume that each of the caters are currently handling since our program amounts to approximately 80,000 to 85,000 meals a year. So I'm here tonight to respectfully request the approval of the Golden Corral of Ashboro as the caterer for the nutrition program and that the bid be approved for a two-year contract period starting July 1/22 to June 30th of '24 at a price of $4.85 a meal. And I'm happy to answer any questions as well.
Quick question, is Golden Corral currently serving it?
They are currently.
How long have they had the contract?
They have had a two-year contract with an extension of a year.
Okay, and they've been doing fine and everything and?
We're pleased with them.
Thank you. Any questions from commissioners?
I have a motion.
Is that okay with you, Commissioner Eifert?
That I would do, Commissioner.
Go ahead, Commissioner Longhahn.
I make a motion that we extend the contract to Golden Corral of Ashboro for a two-year period.
We have a motion by Commissioner Longhahn?
Second.
Second by Vice Chairman Alman. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Pamela. Dwayne Wingo Show. A variety, a variety program that I have watered sewer grant resolutions.
Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate y'all consolidating these. I'm going to plow through them here real quick and hopefully if you have any questions, we can get those addressed. Stanley County Utilities is working with Chambers Engineering to prepare for AIA Water and Wastewater Grant applications for consideration by NCDQ. The application submitted deadline will be May 2nd, 2022. The grants are as follows, are the grant applications, excuse me. The first is a study of the merger and acquisition of the town of Norwood's water distribution and sewer collection systems, including the water and wastewater treatment facilities. The study will include an appraisal of the town of Norwood's water and sewer assets, a current and projected financial analysis of debt to revenue operations, an engineering evaluation of the integrity of the existing water and sewer systems and a capital cost projection for needed improvements and repairs. The amount requested in this grant application is $150,000. The second is a grant application to study the merger and acquisition for the city of Locusts's sewer collection system. The study will include an inventory of the city of Locusts's sewer assets, a current and projected financial analysis of debt to revenue operations, an engineering evaluation of the integrity of the existing sewer collection system and a capital cost projections for needed improvements and repairs. The amount requested in this grant application is $100,000. The third is a grant application to fund the completion of a comprehensive five-year, 10-year and 20-year countywide sewer capital plan. This plan will utilize Stanley County's comprehensive land use plan to be completed by December 2022 to determine sewer service areas the county has designated for growth and future development. The current adopted 2022 sewer master plan mainly focuses on the 2.5 MGD expansion of the West Stanley Wastewater Treatment Plant and the Town of Red Cross area sewer project. This countywide sewer capital plan will cover all other areas and extend the planning horizon out for 20 years. The amount requested in this grant application is $150,000. The fourth and last grant application is for the completion of the Millimport Water Transmission Main Interconnect from Millimport Road and Highway 73 to the intersection of Millimport Road and, and Five Point Road. The project is listed in the adopted 2022 Capital Water Improvement Plan as a five-year project. The project is necessary, is a necessary first step in obtaining water supply system redundancy to West Stanley. The amount applied for in this grant, which is different than the others, the three others were studies, this one is actually a construction grant, is $3,200,000. Stanley County may elect, proceed or decline any and all of these grants if selected based on the NCDQ determined matching funds. Staff is recommending approval of the resolutions attached in your package for each grant application.
Thank you, Mr. Wingo. Any questions from commissioners?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
Dwayne, word, do you know if these are matching or?
What they'll do or what we expect is that for the acquisitions, they will probably be 100% funded. I believe the other two may be matching depending on, there's some other things that's got to shake out in their review. It's a point system that they evaluate. We do anticipate hopefully, and definitely the Norwood, we believe that'll be 100%. We think Locusts will be as well. The Millimport, there may be a matching, you know, grant portion that we would have to come up with. It could be 50/50, somewhere around in that neighborhood, hopefully. I mean, you never know until they come back.
Thank you. But to be clear, Commissioner Eifert, we would have the ability to reject that?
Yes, sir. If we think, we think it's not in our favor, we don't have the funds to come up with a matching amount, we can say, yeah, we'll, we'll take a pass.
Anything else, commissioners? Kind of talked about these exhaustively at the retreat and since then, so this is not new to this board. Hearing further discussion, we do not. So can we, let me say it this way, I would like to entertain a motion to approve all five grants as presented. I'm sorry, all four grant requests as presented?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve all four grants as presented.
Motion by Vice Chairman Alman. We have a second? Second by Commissioner Fur. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne. Next item on our agenda tonight, heavily modified, is Bailey. This is the Nathan Saltus rezoning.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, let me move that up. Thank you for having me tonight. The first thing I have before you is a rezoning that's requested by Nathan Saltus of Saltus Concrete. He has requested the rezoning of six acres of a 55.75 acre parcel located at 24344, Highway 2427. The parcel is currently zoned RA. I'll go ahead and flip to this slide. It's currently zoned RA and he's requesting that it be rezoned to general business. This parcel is owned by Judith Whitley Underwood. The purpose of the rezoning is to allow for Mr. Saltus's concrete finishing company to be relocated from Cabarrus County. Section 610.1 of the Stanley County zoning ordinance does allow for contractors' offices and storage yards. This would apply to Mr. Saltus's desired use for the six acres. He does plan to use this as storage and office space for Saltus Concrete Company. You do have maps that were provided to you, but I'll go ahead and flip to these also. So this is just an aerial view. And as you can see, the outlined red portion is the proposed rezoned area for the parcel. But he does plan to acquire the whole parcel, but that's the only area that he's requesting to be rezoned. There is currently a residence and multiple outbuildings on the property. Mr. Saltus does plan to add one more building on the property to serve as a garage and office space. Mr. Saltus does plan to eventually build his own residence on the rear portion of the property that will still be zoned RA. This property does have access to public water along 2427 and is located in a growth area per the Stanley County Land Use Plan. Traffic on Highway 2427 near Eifert Road is 13,500 vehicles per day as reported by DOT in 2020. And I'll go ahead and move to the next one. So this is just a zoned view. And like I said before, the outlined area of the red, and as you move up more towards the county R20, there is some general business in that area. You just can't see it from this map. And below that, going towards Red Cross, there's some M1, which is light industrial. Mr. Saltus would have to meet all required setbacks, buffer, fencing, signage and parking regulations that are listed in the Stanley County zoning ordinance. There will be a required 10-foot vegetative buffer between the proposed commercial district and any abutting residential zone district. If existing vegetation is available, that could potentially be used in place of the required buffer. No additional vegetation would be required. Mr. Saltus will have to obtain any necessary permits in order to renovate the existing building into a commercial use. The planning board did meet on March 14th and unanimously recommended approval of the rezoning request. And I will say that obviously everybody within 100 feet of the affected parcel was notified. I didn't receive any phone calls regarding that. When we held the planning board meeting, there were a few people there just with general questions, not necessarily concerned. So that's the extent of public comment that we received and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Any questions from commissioners?
Where is Mr. Saltus? Where is he currently operating out of? Do you know?
I believe it's Concord. Is that correct? Concord. He's currently at his own, he's operating out of his own residence.
Out of his residence?
Yes, yes, sir.
And what type of equipment will be stored at this particular site?
I'm going to direct that more to you. I'm not 100%, no way.
There'll be a few trucks, there'll be some excavators, bobcats, there'll be some trial machines, lumber and plywood, stuff like that.
Will they be in, inside of a building or outside of the building?
Over time, everything will be pretty much, except for like the lumber and plywood, that would basically be outdoors. However, over time, it would be everything I would want indoors.
Thank you.
Any further questions from commissioners? Most pleasure, the board. Oh. My notes weren't long here. My notes weren't long here.
I make a motion that we approve the...
Hold on one moment, Commissioner Shudo.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, I was looking at the wrong page, because I also have to hold a public hearing. Our business is done. I'm declaring the public hearing open. Is there anyone that would like to come speak for or against this rezoning? Glad there was no one to catch my mistake then, okay. I'm declaring the public hearing closed. Now, you were saying, Commissioner Shudo?
Approve the motion as requested.
Motion to approve by Commissioner...
I was gonna say approve the emotion, and then I just had a brain...
Approve the emotion by Commissioner Shudo. So we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Shudo. Do we have a second? Ms. Jenny, go ahead, ma'am.
Chairman Jordan, if the motion to approve or disapprove the rezoning could include reasons for the approval or disapproval, such as economic development reasons, or it is consistent or inconsistent with the land use plan, I don't believe there's suggestive language in the packet this evening.
I'm sorry, do you have any certain language on this one?
It's not in, it's not in there. They didn't include it this time, and so I think that's why the county, Jenny is saying if you could...
If I understand it right, Commissioner Shudo would like to make a motion to approve the rezoning of the six acres of the 5.75 acre tract at 24334, Highway 2427, from RA to general business, with the purpose of allowing him to store his equipment lumber. Did I get that right?
Yeah, that's exactly what I said earlier, except I left out 30-year words or so. That is the request. Do I have to reverse that fine?
We would ask you to stimulate, stimulate...
Consistent with the land use plan.
And it's consistent with the land use plan, if you could add that language.
And make sure it's consistent with, and is consistent with the land use plan.
Glad you remembered that, Commissioner Shudo, because I totally forgot. Thank you, sir. Give the guy with the speech impediment the job to make this stuff to... Anybody, can I get a commissioner to second that?
Second.
What are you seconding? Just wanna see if you do it all over again. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. One of these days, it'll stop being a circus. We have a long agenda tonight. Next item on the agenda, also Ms. Bailey, a text amendment for short-term rental clarifications.
Okay. Sorry. Okay, the next item I have is just some clarification on a short-term rental. We adopted this not too long ago, but there needs to be a little bit of clarification. So that notification is required of all property owners within 100 feet of the parcel containing a short-term rental. Amendments would add three words to clarify that notification of the adjoining and nearby property owners as shown below. This is simply a clarification to the language recently adopted. The planning board unanimously recommended approval of this text amendment at their meeting on March 14th, 2022. And just for emphasis purposes, recently received a packet of someone that was requesting a short-term rental for residents here in Stanley County, and they emailed me and they were like, well, there's nobody within 100 feet of the short-term rental. And I was like, um. So they were thinking that it meant that of the actual residence, not the property lines. So this would just clarify that it's for the property lines, anyone within 100 feet of the property lines, not the residence itself, just for clarification.
This is basically the Airbnb-type thing for Airbnbs?
Yes, sir.
We go to the hearing. Any questions from commissioners? Okay. I declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone here that would like to speak for or against? Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. Most pleasure, the board.
I make a motion that we make a minor three-word change of text of section 423.3.B3 of the Stanley County zoning ordinance dealing with short-term rentals to the attached document.
Motion by Commissioner Shudo to amend the zoning ordinance as it's been presented. We have a second. Second by Commissioner Fur. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Trades facility contract.
Got one more, conditional zoning.
Okay, was there two of that one?
No, there was, it's, you skipped over one.
Oh, there is two of them. My apologies, sir. Told you, you guys... Tyler, did I do something to make you mad this week? Are you just trying to make my agenda complicated, ma'am? So I skipped ZA 2208? Okay. So Ms. Bailey, please come back. I blame this Tyler. Scott's the one that picked on your candies, not me, ma'am.
Okay, so the third item that's before you tonight is ZA 22-08. The Stanley County zoning ordinance currently requires that any applicant for a conditional zoning district must hold a community meeting prior to the submission of an application for the rezoning. The owner or developer is required to notify all the adjoiningers to the property at least 14 days before this community meeting. The current language also requires that the planning department receive the application for a conditional zoning district at least 25 days in advance of the planning board meeting. The result is a significant delay in the process. A requirement for a community meeting, especially for a single lot conditional rezoning district, seems unnecessary since there will be a public meeting with the planning board and a legislative hearing before the Board of Commissioners. The planning department staff already has the authority to reject or delay an incomplete application, and should not treat a request for conditional zoning differently from any other rezoning request. This suggested change would amend the language to encourage a community meeting for a major subdivision that applies for a conditional rezoning, but it would not be a requirement. Planning department policy is to notify all property owners within 100 feet of any proposed rezoning prior to the meeting of the planning board. General statute requires notification prior to the Board of Commissioner meeting legislative hearing between 10 and 25 days in advance. In several cases approved so far, the time constraints that are created by this requirement have been difficult for those developers to work around. The public meeting has been poorly attended. The City of Locust does not, does many conditional zoning cases, excuse me, and does not require a community meeting in advance of the planning board meeting. The planning board considered this item at their meeting on March 14th and voted unanimously to recommend approval.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey.
No problem.
Any questions from commissioners?
The reason that we don't have a community meeting before is because, again, it's not that you're cutting the public out of their comments, they still meet before the planning board, have that public hearing, and then, in their case, the council. So they would still have two opportunities to, you know, make their point.
Right. And so you're still gonna have two official public meetings. That just stops you from having to have your own third impromptu, not really regulated at all, public meeting.
And if they want to, they can. It's still encouraged, it's just not gonna be necessarily required if it's approved.
Understood. Any further questions from commissioners? This, does this require a public hearing? County manager?
Does.
Stand by, Ms. Bailey.
No problem.
I declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone that would like to speak for or against this motion? Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. Most pleasure, the board.
Ms. Chair. Make a motion to approve the presented amendment not requiring a community meeting any longer.
Motion presented by Commissioner Almond. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Eford. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Now, if I have not read my agenda wrong, it's only two pages long and it's sitting right in front of my face. The other 85 pages Ms. Tyler gave me make perfect sense. I'm having a problem with the first two, ma'am. County manager Lucas, this is our trades facilities contract resolution.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Before you this evening, we have the bids, the bid tabulation for the trades facility that was, they were opened last Tuesday on March 29th. That full certified bid tab is in our packet. The lowest responsive bidder was Walter B. Davis Construction out of Charlotte. It's recommended the contract for construction of the facility awarded to the lowest responsive bidder, Walter B. Davis. Further, it's recommended the board approve the attached reimbursement resolution so the contract can commence prior to the financing for the project being secured. And this will allow the county to move forward with the project and reimburse the general fund for project-related expenditures when debt proceeds once the loan is secured. And so we'll immediately begin the process of securing bank bids. And so we'll have the bid amount, which is roughly 10.9, a little over 10.9, will also build in into our financing contingency of roughly 5%. So we're probably, we'll go out to bid to the banks for a financing of about 11.4 million versus the 10.9. And that will give us the 5% contingency for different things that may arise during the project. So we don't, money's there, so we don't have to constantly come back and do budget amendments every time there's an issue that arises in the project, so. But there is, so we'll go for that 11 million, 11.4 million loan, where the construction contingency. It's anticipated, based on current rates, that that will likely be in the 765,000 range. Hopefully, it's a little better. If it's, we get interest rates more consistent with what we've had lately, I think it will be better than 765,000, but just to be conservative, we're looking at 765. There is sufficient quarter cent sales tax revenue to cover that. There is roughly a placeholder around 600,000 in the current community college budget, but we have that additional revenue flexibility with the quarter cent sales tax. We're building reserves with that, so I feel very confident that we can, with the existing current economic climate, and even if we had a little bit of a slowdown, we would be okay with taking on this loan and using the quarter cent sales tax to repay that. And so the two items that before you this evening are to consider and approve awarding the trades facility contract to Walter B. Davis and consider and approve the reimbursement resolution. And like I say, once, so anything we incur in terms of expenses between now and when we close the loan, we would just repay ourselves, the general fund, with those debt proceeds. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and I know some folks from the community college are also here this evening, if you have any questions for them.
Thank you, county manager Lucas. Any questions from commissioners?
Chairman, I do have a question. I wanna make sure I understood.
Yes, sir.
You're talking about reimbursing the county before the loan closes. The question I've got, we're not gonna start construction before the loan closes, correct?
It could. I mean, you might see some civil work done, but they gotta order the building, it's gonna take six to eight months to even get here. And so my guess is, is that, so we'll begin the process of sending out the RFP and the whole process with the LGC application, and there's some things we'll have to do with this board in terms of resolutions and other things. My guess is that whole process will take around 60 days to do. It'll take us probably 30 to 45 days just to get a contract in place with the thing, just going through the legal process. And so what the, so by having that reimbursement resolution in place, and we've done these for other projects in the past, it allows us to, if we did incur some expenses, you would, one, be able to approve a budget amendment and a capital project fund for that. Toby would be able to pre audit that. And if there were any expenses that we did incur, the general fund reserves would cover those, and then once we got, once we closed the loan, the debt proceeds would cover those expenses. Expenses, and you just repay your, for any expenses you did incur out of the general fund, you would reimburse yourself.
Well, as history of banking, my suggestion would be make sure whoever the lender is, they don't like construction starts before a loan closes.
Right.
Just make sure we don't get ourselves in a situation.
Understood.
Okay.
I don't foresee significant work happening on that. Probably, you may see some civil work happen, but I mean, like I say, the building itself, they can't, they can't put anything up until it actually gets here. And so, and they're saying six to eight months for that building to actually get on site. And so, you know, they may be able to do, start some grading, but that would be it.
Thank you, Commissioner Longhun. Anyone else? Most pleasure, the board.
I'll make a motion that we approve or award, or award the contract to Walter B. Davis Construction and to consider and approve reimbursement resolution.
We have a motion to approve both by Commissioner Longhun. Second by Commissioner Fur. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, county manager Lucas. Fellow commissioners, you've had time to look over the consent agenda, it's in your packet.
I make a motion we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Shudo. Do we have a second? Second by Vice Chairman Almond. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Board will, not quite yet, sorry. Commissioner comments? Put that there to you, Commissioner Fur.
Thank you. Chairman Jordan, I have two. First off, on April 23rd, which will be Saturday coming up, Richfield Meisenheimer is doing a motorcycle ride headed up by the Red Knights. This is to help the medical bills for Michael Dennis that was hurt in a motorcycle accident back in December. Supposedly his medical bills is devastating. Kickstands will be up at 11 o'clock. Registration starts at 9:30. I believe it's $10 for each rider and $20 for the bike. So that would be to get it started. The second one is the Kerry Deeford ride, which will be on Saturday, the 30th. Kickstands up at 10 o'clock. This is a scholarship fund for out at West Stanley High School for any and all of it or qualify for it. This will be the 23rd year. I'm proud to say that I've led it for 20 years. So I did miss two, and I fully intend to be there on this one. I invite all bike riders to help support both of these worthy rides. Thank you.
Mr. Longhun?
No comment.
Commissioner Almond?
I got a quick one. My mama asked me to announce this, and I listen to my mama. Yeah.
Charlie Hill's fan?
No.
Your time is up.
Go ahead. She, she sent this over to me. Safe Kids Stanley County Admiral Police Department will host an Operation Medicine Drop here at the Commons, April 14th, from 11 a.m. to 3 p.m. A medicine drop, you know, if you have like extra pills and stuff.
It's not... I was like, they're just gonna drop in medicine? How does that work? Commissioner Shudo?
Hey, just one quick thing is that the Halbar Parks and Recreation is hosting Food Truck Fridays, the first Friday of every month at City Lake Park, and they got lots of food trucks there, and they have a wide variety of music, and they're bringing, packing a lot of people down there. So it's a nice evening out, so the first Friday of May, just come on down there.
Commissioner Shudo, is that, that was paused for a while, right?
What they do, they pause it over the winter time.
Okay, right.
And then the first one they do is in March, but at March, they don't have the entertainment, they just have the food trucks.
Sure they got the, they got the process going again?
Oh, yeah.
So they, they fire it back up all the way into winter?
So I think it's October, it might be October is the last one.
The first Friday of every month, about April to October.
Yes, thank you. And they have a variety of, they'll have soul music, they'll have country music, they'll have beach, beach music.
I went a lot.
And a lot of food trucks this time, too. They were, so, come on down.
If you're out there listening, a funnel cake truck would be... If you're out there listening, a funnel cake truck would be great.
They did have one.
Not in the beginning. Glad they're getting better. Commissioner Barbie?
No comment.
Commissioner Eford?
Go heels is all I got to say.
As you may have heard from Commissioner Fur, there are actually quite a few of us commissioners up here that ride motorcycles. Mr. Eford does, Mr. Fur does, I do.
Somebody's loan you one.
Lay a loan you one, just don't... Lay a loan you one, just don't drive in front of my mama. I ain't getting a hug next week. But I say it to say, you know, for those of you in the audience, and the two of you that may watch this on YouTube, by all means, please share these rides. You have no idea how truly supportive these bikers are. And it's not always just bikers. On almost all of these rides, there's just as many Jeep fans and Jeepers as there are guys that ride bikes. They're almost always welcome to attend. They just... To see some of these bike clubs that support law enforcement, that support a fire EMS come together. I watched the Red Knights and the Guardians, and gosh, who was there last week? I can't remember, like, three different motorcycle clubs. And let's do 100 bikes. And I mean, it's just a neat thing to see. On top of those, you've got the Michael Dennis ride to support firefighter Dennis. You've got the Kerry Eford ride for the scholarship fund. This coming Saturday, it's not local, but it's close to local. It's in Charlotte. I'm not sure if you remember Officer Mia Goodwin. She was a Charlotte officer who was killed the day she returned back to duty from maternity leave, leaving behind some very young children and a husband. And so her memorial ride raised funds for those kids in that family is this Saturday. Details are on my Facebook page, they're on a variety of places, but again, Jeepers are encouraged to come, bikers are encouraged to come. I don't remember the fee. I think it's 20 bucks cash. But to see folks put these events on is pretty cool, and to be part of it on the bike community is pretty cool. Other than that, go heels. I don't have anything else. Can we get a motion to adjourn? Moving quick. Second? Second by Commissioner Shudo. All in favor, please say aye.